Councilmember Perkins, we are working on getting Councilmember McCandless admitted to the meeting.
Okay, we can wait for her to get in there?
It looks like she's on. Thank you.
Right, great.
We should be good to go.
Are we ready to start?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is January 6, 2025, City Council meeting, Independence, Missouri. We are doing this through Zoom during the Blair Snow Apocalypse that we had. I hope everyone had a great Christmas and a Happy New Year and survived the weekend that we had. Not a real busy agenda, but we have some house cleaning keep-ups that we are going to be doing. The Mr. City Manager will give us a brief update in just a minute or two regarding where we are at with the storm event and kind of give us update on that. With that, we will start. Councilman Fears, we please do the invocation. And just before you do that, Councilman Fears, we will do the full agenda. We haven't done this since the pandemic lockdown. We'll do the full agenda, have the invocation, pledge allegiance, roll call, and be just like a regular council meeting. So, Councilman Fears, invocation, please.
All right. We pray with me. Your Lord, we're thankful for this new year and all the opportunity it presents to our city and, most importantly, to our citizens. We pray a blessing at this time on our citizens and especially those that have been impacted by this recent storm. We are thankful for all those who have worked long, hard hours in preparation for, during, and in the aftermath of the storm. We pray a blessing on each one. At this time, we come together and pray at this time for our city council that we may be blessed with wisdom and with your Holy Spirit as we come together tonight to consider and conduct the business of our city. Bless each one as we endeavor to do the very best for our city, and these things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Before we do the citizens' request, we need to make a motion to suspend the rules of procedures.
So moved.
I would move in second. Everyone saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Want to oppose? Mr. City Manager, I'll give you this time to give us a brief update on where we're at with the storm event.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem Perkins and members of the council. Just first and foremost, I want to say a hearty thank you to all of our city staff who have been involved in responding to the storm over the last several days. We have had street maintenance crews who have been continuously working in 12-hour shifts, out responding to remove snow from our city roadways. And just as testament to what a great job that they are doing, there have been about 52 accidents within our municipal boundary since the storm started. And of those 52, only 12 of those occurred on city-maintained roads. So that's certainly an impressive testament to their hard work. We've had our Parks and Recreation employees who are responsible for maintaining 28 city-owned parking lots and 18 sidewalks around different city facilities, clearing those so that our city facilities can be safely accessed and used by the community and our emergency responders at the police station and the fire stations across town. Speaking of our men and women in public safety, Fire Department has really stepped up, continuing to respond in these adverse conditions. They've extinguished car fires. They've responded to structural fires. They've provided emergency medical service. And there was even one call where they had to walk just because the snow was so deep that they weren't able to get their truck there, but that didn't deter them. Our Police Department continues to respond to emergencies and even going above and beyond. For example, they shoveled a walkway so paramedics could reach and transport a patient safely. Power and Light has worked to restore power outages to minimize disruption for our residents and our businesses. We've had our Municipal Services Crew who've responded in sub-freezing temperatures to repair a critical water main break. Just on and on, thankful for the work that our team has done in these really adverse conditions. Moving forward, during the day today, our street maintenance crews were still treating our primary routes. We wanted to get as much of that slush off of those main roads as we could before the freeze set again tonight. In the overnight hours, the crews were going to return to the residential neighborhoods and start working on curb-to-curb snow removal in residential areas as well as clearing intersections. So a lot of these neighborhood streets, if we have been in them, have only received a singular pass-through, but now we're going to start clearing those curb-to-curb. We still do have some disruption to services. So the Presiding Judge of Jackson County has declared that Municipal Court will be closed again tomorrow. All of the courts in Jackson County will be closed tomorrow, and that includes Independence Municipal Court. So no court docket for Tuesday, January 7. Out of abundance of caution and to help our street maintenance crews, we've made the decision to keep some of our facilities closed. That includes the Sermon Center, the George Owen Nature Park, the National Frontier Trails Museum, and the Palmer Senior Center. Other city facilities like City Hall and the Independence Utility Center will remain open to the public, though there will be modified staffing. We are hoping to keep as many of our employees off the road as possible, again, in an effort to help our crews treat the roads and also to place the safety of our employees at the forefront. So we're making good headway. There's still some work ahead of us, so continue to be patient with us, but I'm certainly very proud of the work that's been done today. So thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Zach. Mr. City Manager, appreciate that. Madam City Clerk, will you do the roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart, sorry.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vaught?
Here.
Mayor Protem Perkins? And the mayor is absent.
That's correct. Mayor Rowland's in travel. He was not able to make it through through the weekend, as you can imagine, and he's in pursuit back to Independence now. We will move to citizens' requests. We'll start with Mr. Brent Schonemeyer. Mr. Schonemeyer, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Happy New Year and a snowy one at that. My name is Brent Schonemeyer, and I live at 3704 South Grand Independence, Missouri, and have previously spoken on Rental Ready. The effort and proposed policy recommendations are commendable. Updating the Rental Ready checklist to include more health and safety items is long overdue. That said, I remain concerned with the current private inspection firm process. Since Rental Ready's adoption in 2017, there's been no formal review how the private inspection system has performed. In short, currently, there is little oversight, transparency, or accountability with respect to city-required inspections of rental properties. Some of these matters are addressed in the proposed ordinance, but the private inspection process, if it is retained, needs a thorough review. My concerns are rooted in the simple documented fact: Independence Towers passed a Rental Ready inspection. How is that even possible? The private firm which did the Rental Ready inspection of Independence Towers could not provide documentation of the inspection when requested by the city. I repeat, could not provide documentation of the Independence Tower inspection. That same private inspection firm did 54.7% of the inspections for the most recent one-year period. That figure comes from my analysis of Rental Ready inspection data obtained from a public records request. My analysis should be independently reviewed by the city. Perhaps I got it wrong. It is incumbent to evaluate the quality integrity of the current private inspection process before the inspection fee is doubled and more items to be inspected increase. The city staff have made thoughtful suggestions to increase accountability for years of records retention, city review of records, and opening up opportunities for other private firms to do inspection. The larger issue, one for the city council to decide, is why are private firms doing the inspections in the first place? Would you expect private firms to do fire inspections? I doubt it. Would you have private firms do restaurant inspections? Unlikely. Would you have private firms do building inspections? Probably not. So why do we entrust the important health and safety inspections of rental properties to private firms?
You have one minute, sir.
My understanding is there's a February 10 study session. We'll include a presentation on city staff about the city doing the inspections. Thank you, and thank you for being open to this change.
Thank you, Mr. Schonemeyer. Up next, Mark Yanda. Mr. Yanda? Is there a Mr. Yanda?
I do not see him logged on.
Okay, then we'll go to Mr. Matt Robards.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilman Fears.
If I could, I'm not sure we made a motion to allow those outside of the city, so I think I'll make that motion.
Absolutely. Motion is on the table to suspend the rules of procedures?
Second.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Robards, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, Councilman. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight. My name's Matt Roberts. I'm a property owner in Independence. I live in Blue Springs, which is why you had to make the motion just now. I've got a couple of things to say about Article 15, which is Rental Ready, Article 11, Landlord-Tentant Code, and then some general remarks. One of the things in the new Article 15 is the idea of tying tenants being able to get their utilities turned on to the landlord having a business license. And I understand, you know, the city's intent there, you know, they're trying to find landlords that might be unlicensed or, you know, lapsed license or things like that, and that's one way to collect that data. That was proposed as a separate ordinance back in May 2024, and I came and spoke to many of you about that then. And my concern then is still my concern now. I don't know that the process or the data quality is quite good enough yet to tie that together. I realize that the implementation of this is delayed. It's going to not come into effect until January next year. The process got a little better for me personally. I renewed my license last summer, and it worked, and so that took it down to a 28% failure rate instead of a 33% failure rate that I had before. I looked at the landlord licenses and rental properties on the city's data portal yesterday, where you can download a spreadsheet of all the data that the city has collected for that. There were 18,700 or a little more rental properties in the city, and in that database, probably 1.5% of them have bad addresses. 12% of them are, the addresses are exactly duplicate of each other. I'd mentioned before about getting two copies of my business license. I think that's why. My house, my rental house, is in that list twice. And Councilmember Fears' house is in that list twice, with the only difference is it has the "South" designation on the end of the address. That's the only difference. So I know that at a previous study session, Community Development had talked about reworking how those licenses and registers of properties are done in City Works, and I think that's a good idea. I think that would help that and make that a more reliable indicator to give to Power and Light. You know, if Mr. Stenell needs a staff reorganization or to hire somebody or a new version of, you know, upgrade to City Works or whatever, I would encourage the council to pursue that better before that's implemented next January.
You have one minute, sir.
Thank you. The other point I have about the Landlord-Tentant Code, and it's a little bit different than what Mr. Schonemeyer just said. My understanding is that the reason why it structured where you hire a private inspector was there were some, in some jurisdictions, Fourth Amendment concerns with having city staff do it. That makes, the national precedents may have changed since 2016. I'm sure the city attorney has reviewed this, but I would encourage you to, you know, have a good legal backing before that, before you go to that, in the deficient landlord thing where the city staff inspects everything. I would like to finally say that this process has gone a lot better than the initial implementation of Rental Ready. The city has been much more willing to reach out and work with landlords and tenants and, you know, make some changes. Not everybody gets what they want, but it's been a lot smoother than before. I'd specifically like to mention Councilmember Fears. He's been very proactive in answering questions and holding meetings and trying to get input from as much as the, as much of the community's consent. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Robards. Ms. Allison White?
Hi. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ally White. I'm a mortgage holder, a former renter, and a leader with the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union. I attended the study session on December 9. I've reviewed the proposed changes to Rental Ready and the Landlord-Tentant Code, and I've been in discussions with those about the, throughout the month with my tenant neighbors. We are calling on you to pause the process of these amendments for 30 days to allow for meaningful tenant contributions to the content of the amendments to both parts of the code. I have serious concerns about ways that the proposed changes could set up conflicts of interest or unstated incentives for inspectors, landlords, or even city staff and tenants to do things that would undermine the goals of the changes. I've got a couple of examples. So if a private inspection is very thorough, very accurate, and many lessors end up on the list for monthly reinspection, that work could really overwhelm city staff. They may be compelled, even though they wouldn't intend to, to rush or incorrectly mark things as repaired that haven't been permanently thoroughly fixed. Then we'd be right back where we are now, but with a bunch of extra steps and disruption to tenants' lives from the frequent visits. Another example: tenants who know that their home would fail inspection and maybe don't trust their landlord to make repairs in time to get off the deficient list. Maybe don't want to be compelled to leave their units when the business license and utilities get cut off. That's assuming the whole process works as designed. They might hide problems from inspectors or choose not to file reports between inspections, and that's not what any of us intend to happen here. And I don't think this is really very much of a hypothetical. Given the very low numbers of complaints the city is receiving now, I strongly suspect that under-reporting is already a problem. So even though I believe the city staff who worked on this proposal and the tenants who live in rented, single- and multifamily housing are the people who most want the accountability and the lasting repairs, the proposed changes still do have some gaps that could incentivize city staff and tenants to unintentionally work against its success. I also have serious concerns that the proposed changes don't address problems with the basic current structure of Rental Ready. I learned this month that there are 42,000 renters in the city of Independence. And from the study session, I understood that although Community Development has been working on these updates for months, there was no one in the process directly representing and speaking for tenants' interests. This is an unacceptable oversight. Members of the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union have met with multiple members of the city council in the last month to express this concern and their desire to be a constructive part of shaping this policy. The council hasn't taken us up on this offer in a unified way, and we'd like them to take the time to utilize our subject matter expertise. I also learned this month that Independence Towers passed inspection on all nine current points in 2023. Even though there are conditions there that we all know don't even meet the standards the city already had in place for years. So if we don't currently have the accountability to enforce the rules that are in place, changing those rules, even in really great ways, is never going to work the way we all want it to. Please slow this down. Take a beat. Table the vote, table the second reading, whatever you need to do. Take about a month to improve these amendments with the expertise of the people who will be affected the most, the tenants. Get the most effective, most effective and affected people in the room with Community Development. And let's build a Rental Ready program that can actually accomplish what we all want: safe homes that every resident of Independence can be confident renting with dignity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. White. Looks like Mr. Mark Yanda has joined us, so, Mr. Yanda, we will let you join in.
Hey, guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry about that. I had some technical problems here. This is what happens when you get old. And anyway, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Mark Yanda, and I've spoken here before. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. I've got a question about window specification. Again, we've had, we've had some discussions on this, but the window that we're talking about is 36 inches on the opening, and IBC, if we're going to follow that code, is 24. HUD is 50% on the opening, and that has to do with glazier opening. So you might want to look at that. That's something that should be addressed. As far as like, I wanted to talk also on inspections. If we're inspecting things, I think that we should do four units or more and maybe have a lesser section for people that have less than four. And I'm referring to like this percentage of inspections, because a lot of us are single or small groups. Most of us have, you know, less than, say, 20 properties. Also, I'm going to jump around a little bit. When we're talking about, this is like the Rental Ready Chapter 4, Article 15, changes. If you look at LLC registration, it doesn't, it just says LLC. So if you have a C corp, if you have an S corp, those don't apply. And again, you want to look at that documentation. And then also, how do we follow up on these type of inspections? Are we going to have KIA, something we can, you know, both look at as far as the tenant and the landlord? And, you know, that's something I think we need to address. Yeah, I think it's 14 dash, or sorry, 4-15-04 is what that business license required. LLC is the only thing that's located there. Either add the additional or strike it. Just kind of my opinion. And again, how's it going to be tracked? That tenability thing, because it doesn't say how it's going to be tenable.
You have one minute, sir.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. And then, let's see here. Sorry. Really, I guess, all in all, things look pretty favorable. It's just those kind of things there on code that I was discussing. I would look up that code with the IBC, and I would pay attention to that. And then you want to, if we're going to follow IBC, it should be 24, not 36. And then, again, accessible on the window, if it's above, like, say, two stories or above, I can see where the safety might be in place, but if it's not, I think that we should put that in there. So, because it currently doesn't read that, and that's something that we talked about previously, that might be important. I just want to make sure that someone doesn't burn up like myself. And it's important that my community understands that that specification should be either changed or struck. Anyway, it's Mark Yanda. I appreciate everything with you guys. Thanks for your support. Thanks for the community, and I hope you guys have a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yanda. Madam City Clerk, is there anybody else that we're missing that's signed up to speak or online to speak?
We had one other gentleman, but I don't believe he is on. He was stuck in the snow when I talked to him a little bit ago, so he might not be able to log on.
Sounds good. Well, thank you. Then we'll move on to presentations and resolutions. We were going to postpone this. Councilman Fears?
Make motion to postpone this for two weeks so that we can do that in person.
There's been a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, postpone for two weeks. So that would be January 21, because Martin Luther King's birthday is on January 20, so that will be on a Tuesday. So we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose? No oppose. That will be moved to January 21. No proclamations. That brings us to the consent agenda. Councilman Fears?
Yes. Make a motion to approve the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Can we have a second? Second? They moved a second. Does anyone have any items that they would like to pull for discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Wylie?
Can I pull number four under the consent agenda?
Yes. Four?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Fears?
Like to pull number five and Resolution 25703.
Okay, and I would like to pull 25704.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman McCandless?
Could we pull 25701?
Yes. Okay. Anyone else? Madam City Clerk, minus number four on the consent agenda, number five, Resolution 25701, 25703, and 25704. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Councilwoman Wiley, we'll start with you, number four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. May I inquire of the City Manager, please?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, on number four, can you outline what the master plan will go over? And also the stakeholders that they'll be meeting with to work on this master plan? Thank you.
I'd be glad to, Councilmember Wiley. So Mayor Protem and members of the council, this item is going to update the city's Parks Master Plan. That is a very important document to the Parks and Recreation Department as it helps guide future planning efforts for that department. The last Parks Master Plan was produced in 2010, and as you may recall, during some of our general obligation bond conversations and explorations, there were quite a few projects that were still left incomplete from that 2010 master plan. And ultimately, we thought it would be more prudent financially and operationally to spend time updating that master plan rather than pursuing general obligation bond authority to implement those projects to ensure that today's priorities in the community still align with and match what your residents and your constituents want to see happen. So this master plan document will serve several purposes. Probably one of the most prominent of those is to ensure that we are focusing on quality in our park system over quantity. Right now, we have quite a massive inventory of land and assets that we are responsible for maintaining and operating. And then a financially resource-restricted environment, that means oftentimes these assets aren't getting the full attention that they need. So we want to make sure, rather than just having these little green spaces here and there that the city has acquired over the years, that we've got adequate park space in an equitable fashion throughout the community, throughout all four council districts. We also want to make sure that the recreational needs of the community are being met for all age groups and all users of all kinds. So everything from young toddlers, young mothers with newborns are getting the kind of enrichment and activities that they want to see, all the way up to our senior adults in the community are still getting the kind of connectivity and enrichment that we want for that community. Um, I will, uh, ask that Director Morris Heidi, uh, share just a little bit more with you about what our outreach efforts are going to look like. Uh, while Morris is getting ready to, uh, come on, I will say, uh, this is going to be an extended project. This is about a twelve-month, uh, start to finish process because of all of the stakeholders we intend to engage. Uh, but Morris, if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit with the council about, uh, what some of that outreach is going to look like in some of our target groups.
Sure, certainly. Uh, Morris Heidi, Director of Parks for Recreation and Tourism, happy to answer that question. So, uh, if you recall, through the Recreation Feasibility Study that we did last year, we had a online survey. Uh, the expectation is that we would do actually a, uh, additional survey, several different surveys through ETC. I think, uh, most of everyone is familiar with ETC Institute. The city has used, uh, for several years as a, um, a great resource for surveying the community. So that's kind of the, uh, the main focus of the stakeholder engagement, but also including reaching not only to elected officials, citizen groups. Uh, with Parks and Recreation, we have a lot of, um, stakeholder engagement with a lot of different organizations, be it the theater, uh, constituency, the historic sites. Um, we run the gamut on many, many different user groups, and so we certainly want to revisit with them uh, on their interest for the Parks Master Plan for, uh, you know, the next ten-plus years. So, uh, kind of runs the gamut as far as a lot of different user groups. Uh, but really, the ETC survey having a, a more defensible survey result rather than that online survey, uh, that's kind of the, uh, the hallmark of our, um, feedback we're looking for from citizens with this.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Hi, Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you. Uh, to follow on to Councilmember Wiley's question, I just want to clarify that the dollars for this come from the park sales tax, which is a dedicated and segregated set of funds, can't be used for anything except for parks. Just making sure I understand that correctly, Mr. City Manager.
You, you do understand. I'll put one addendum on that. Uh, so, um, most of this is being funded with the, um, um, Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, uh, that was voter approved. There is a portion of this project that is being funded through tourism dollars, and that is because we are taking a look at our historic site inventory and making sure we are properly, um, accounting for and planning for, uh, the future of those sites. Uh, really doing an assessment of best practices of ownership and operation of historic sites, uh, within a community. Uh, so there are a portion of dollars from the transient guest tax allocated to this. But, um, by, uh, and large, the majority are coming from, um, the voter-approved and, and restricted funds from the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax.
Thank you. I just want to be sure that anybody watching understands that these dollars can't be put into the general fund. They can't be used to pay for other projects. Because we voted on this as a specific tax for parks, it can only be used for parks. So thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Good point. Any other questions? Hearing none or seeing none? Um,
Mr. Ma, Mr. Mayor Protem, do I need to move to approve number four?
You do. Thank you.
So moved?
Second.
You have moved in a second? Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Item passes. Councilman Fears, item number five.
Uh, first, I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
A motion and seconded.
Um, to, uh, inquire of the city manager on this. Um, Mr. Walker, uh, you know, this is a, a major expenditure from Power and Light, um, over five point four million dollars for a new substation. Um, given the scope of that and what we're, what we're doing there, I was hoping that, um, we could just give a little, uh, explanation to the, um, public as to what all we're doing out there, uh, with that. And then, secondly, um, I have a question relative to the, uh, bid tabulation sheet, and I don't understand the, um, the line item. This is evaluated costs with options and losses. I don't know what that means. And so I hope, uh, maybe, um, Mr., um, uh, the Power and Light Director could, uh, help with that, or, or, uh, you can help with that.
Certainly, um, happy to help with that, Councilmember Fears. Uh, this project is being, um, necessitated by the, uh, growth and development that has been planned for, for over half a century in the Little Blue Valley. Uh, we are finally seeing the type of residential and, uh, commercial and industrial development that has long been planned for that area occurring. Um, we've seen the first, uh, few sites of the North Point Development Project, um, come out of the ground. Obviously, if you've been in that area recently, you've seen some of the substantial grading that's happening at Little Blue Parkway and Truman Road, uh, as more of that project begins to unfold. And then, of course, um, more and more of the residential development, um, that was long planned for finally taking hold. That is a good problem. It's requiring, um, the city to make additional infrastructure improvements to accommodate that growth. Um, part of that is adding this new substation that has long been planned as part of that growth. Uh, but we finally reached that point where the demand, um, meets the investment for that. So that is the why, uh, behind the item. Uh, as far as some of your questions about, um, the contract itself and the pricing, uh, I will ask, um, Independence Power and Light Director Joe Heggenduffer, uh, to go ahead and come on and, uh, speak to that for us.
Yeah, uh, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Joe Heggenduffer, the Director of Independence Power and Light. So, uh, as our city manager, uh, put it, yes, the project is for the development of the Little Blue Valley. Currently, we are limited to about twenty megawatts of, um, capacity down in that region from a perspective of uh, distribution and, and electrical capacity down there. This substation will allow us to go clear up to about eighty megawatts before we need to add to this substation. So this substation takes, uh, six, six nine, uh, thousand volts, or KV, uh, turns it down to thirteen point eight, uh, which is delivered down through a region, uh, to residential, commercial, and industrial customers. Uh, Councilmember Fears, is, uh, uh, on your specific question on the tabulation, I, I'd be, uh, quite honest that I would have to get with the team that did the evaluation. I was not on that evaluation team. I know that there was a lot of risks that they weighed, uh, being, are they internal to the U.S.? Are they external to the U.S.? Are there delivery, um, complications that may make them, um, meet any timeline requirements that was going to be in jeopardy? Um, looking at this project, I don't know if that answers it, but, um, this project, these, these, uh, transformers, there are two of them, uh, are a three-year delivery time. It's, they're going to be delivered in twenty twenty-eight. Um, that's about as early as you can get into the timeframe now. We did work through several months. This is, has been, has been ready to go for a couple of months, but we were working with legal on some of the legal terms and, and conditions. And I appreciate the, the legal team working with me on that.
Well, the, let me, let me maybe clarify my question a little bit. So on the, on the tabulation sheet, there's a, uh, the first line is a not to exceed costs. And, um, and then, uh, below, right below that, there's a evaluated cost with options and losses. And I'm just trying to understand what that means by options and losses.
Um, I would have to get back with you on that to be quite honest.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm sure that the work has been done on the tabulation and I, and, and, uh, I can see that has been, you know, I looked at the, the bid and everything, but I just was trying to understand that language. And so, um, you know, if you could get back with me later on, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, I can get that answer. Any other questions?
No, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Just to clarify, uh, Mr. Heggenduffer, this investment is going to be one of the ways that we are capable of selling more energy, which will increase the sustainability from the financial side of IPL. Is that a fair assessment?
That, that is completely a fact, yes. So this is one of those discussions that we've had, um, council and myself and city leadership on economic development and growth, right? So I can't sell more electricity if I can't produce it or deliver it, uh, to the locations that it's needed with the growth in the Little Blue. Um, I've already had questions and requests about, um, what could be delivered down there now and what could be delivered down there in the future for different businesses. So, um, yeah, this is absolutely necessary for the economic development of the Little Blue Valley and, and the East Gate Commerce Region.
And when we have a better balance of business versus residential, it takes some of the financial pressure off of residential customers because we have larger users on the business side. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes. The challenge that Independence has had for a long time is it's a heavy residential. Uh, so you rely on the residents to pay the majority of the costs for running the business. Uh, think about it as small-town suppliers versus big Costco warehouses, right? So even though a commercial or industrial may have a, 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 what seems like a lower rate they're buying in, in big bulk. So that helps your overall rate profile. Uh, currently, Independence customer count-wise, we're over ninety percent residential, but about half of our energy produced goes to residential and half goes to commercial industrial. If we could raise that number up and be more like seventy-five percent of our energy goes to commercial, industrial, um, that would take some of the pressure off of the residential side of, of the equation, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Item passes. Councilman Fears? Twenty-five seven oh three.
Right. Um, item twenty-five seven oh three is a sister resolution to provide some additional detail uh, relative to the ordinance that we passed to put a general obligation bond on the ballot. Um, it's, uh, uh, provides a lot of detail, and I just thought it might be worthwhile, given the, the scope of that, for, uh, us to ask the city manager to provide a little additional, um, just a, a general overview of what all this resolution is trying to do.
Sure, I'd be, um, happy to do that. Uh, so as Councilmember Fears said, this resolution, um, is really a companion to the ordinance that the council adopted, uh, at your last meeting, which was, of course, the last meeting of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, when the council adopts ordinances calling for an election, there's really some boilerplate language uh, that often comes from state statute about what, um, a question can ask, uh, and how it's phrased. And oftentimes, that's, it's written through a very, um, legal or legislative, uh, mentality, and not always frankly, uh, the most friendly to a voter or to a layperson who's trying to understand, uh, an issue. Um, obviously, um, there's always going to be some level of, of concern among voters who want to ensure, uh, that what they're being told, uh, is in fact what is going to happen if they vote in support of an issue. And so this resolution goes beyond the legal, uh, nature of the ordinance that established the general obligation bond election this coming April. It really drills down into those three questions into more detail, um, about, uh, what, uh, specifically will occur with the funds in each of those, um, questions. Now, I say that it does that with some level of specificity, but I do want to qualify that a little bit. Um, uh, many of these assets, you know, are not static. Uh, they continue, um, to experience deterioration and/or use, uh, at a different level. So a, a road that we think today is the most pressing priority to be addressed by the time the next year rolls around, uh, there may be, uh, conditions that have created a far more serious safety, uh, risk to one of the roads. And so it would be prudent for us to, uh, evaluate that and prioritize that above what we originally thought. So we, we have provided detail in here about the, uh, seven elementary schools where sidewalks will be constructed. Uh, we've provided detail about how the fifteen million dollars will be spent to address, uh, the specific bridges in our community uh, that are either closed or, um, nearing a point of failure where they will have to be closed. Uh, we've got some additional detail about the Justice Center, uh, and the animal shelter, uh, projects. And, uh, then we have detail, uh, for question three about, um, the three historic sites, uh, as well as the, um, some more specificity about the Independence Athletic Complex, uh, and the improvements to be made there. In addition to giving you, uh, and the voters, that additional level of detail behind the projects, uh, there is language in here about, um, some oversight and accountability. Um, couple of things there. Uh, the resolution calls for the city council's audit and finance to have a quarterly review of geo-bond activities, uh, what spending has looked like, what it has been utilized for, drawdown on the bonding authority to see, uh, how much has been borrowed to date. Um, so just that the, um, council can be that oversight entity to ensure, uh, proper spending of bond dollars in, in accordance with voter approval. Uh, it requires the city manager to provide an annual report then, um, to be published publicly, uh, uh, again detailing how those bond dollars are being spent. Uh, and then it will provide, um, that the city's annual five-year capital improvements plan, every year that that is produced, because, because we do produce that annually, just forecasting that five years out, uh, that that capital improvements plan will have detail in it about the planned spending of those dollars each year. So again, the community can track, uh, the plans, uh, for how those bond dollars are going to be spent. So this just provides some additional oversight, um, some additional, uh, enforcement, and, uh, gives the community some additional level of detail, uh, to help them better understand and provide some assurances about how those bond dollars will be spent.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Councilman Fears, would you like to make a motion for approval?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going to do that earlier and I forgot. Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty-five seven oh three.
Second.
I have, I have a motion in, in a second? Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Item carries. Councilwoman McCandless, twenty-five seven zero one.
Uh, first, let me move approval of twenty-five seven zero one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. City Manager, uh, my understanding of reading this is sort of the compromise from previous discussions of boards and, and, um, commissions. Um, it sets out some standards of behavior. It removes the restriction on limiting people to serving on a single board. Um, and it outlines the process of the council liaisons to be advisory, but not necessarily participatory uh, in the decisions of the, of the committees. But there's one issue that I just want to make sure I have clarity on. Um, and that is section one, item one, subsection D, which says appointment should be made by the city council liaison as quickly as possible. And then since below, it says all boards and commissions are voted on by the council, I am assuming that the appointment means that it's a recommendation to the council, and then the full council votes on it. And I just want to make sure I understand that part correctly. And I just want to make sure I understand that part correctly.
Yes, Councilwoman McCandless, that is exactly correct. We just wanted to continue to strengthen the bonds between the council and the boards and commissions that you've appointed. So we've created these liaisons of of the city council to those committees, giving you some opportunity to provide input and insight on as to the needs of those boards and commissions and the right type of individual to fill a vacancy when they come along. But those would still be subject to approval by the full council.
Very good, thank you very much. I have no more questions.
Is there any questions or comments? Hearing seen none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkin, I'm sorry, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Yes.
Item passes. That leaves me, twenty-five, seven zero four, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. City Manager, can you explain twenty-five, seven oh four and what this is doing and what this will do for our city?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to do that. So this resolution is really going to start the process for two very important categories of projects for our community. And as we have shared with the council on a number of occasions, the price of completing public improvements continues to in increase and escalate, both in terms of construction materials as well as labor costs to complete these projects. So there are two projects that we want to ensure that we are getting done as quickly as possible so that we can ensure, one, that they're getting done, and two, that they're getting done in the most cost-effective manner possible. Let me speak about the police project first. So as we've discussed and and highlighted, it is our plan and intent to begin to move functions and operations of the Independence Police Department from the current Independence Police Headquarters at Truman Road and Nolan Road to what is presently being utilized as the Independence Utility Center near the corner of R. D. Myes and Twenty-third Street. That is one of the component projects of the general obligation bond, building that campus there. Regardless of how that project turns out, however, there are functions that we are fully intending to remove from that facility due to the deterioration and the outgrown space that we're experiencing there. So there are some renovations that need to happen to make the existing utility center fit and safe for a public safety use. Rather than waiting for the general obligation bond to address those needs, we are proposing to utilize a portion of the marijuana sales tax fund that was approved by the voters for some public safety uses to bond those dollars so that we we will, in turn, use those marijuana revenues to pay off debt that the city borrows, but to go ahead and complete those renovations today. Even with paying back the interest on the debt for that project, it will still be cheaper by our calculations than waiting to begin construction after the bond would be approved. So this is the most financially prudent way to start to address that need and get that project moving. At the same time, in twenty twenty-one, our voters approved an increase in the fire safety sales tax, a portion of that which was to be used to renovate or construct new fire stations to address the deficiencies in the community. Again, with the costs of labor and materials escalating, we want to ensure that we're getting projects done as quickly as possible to avoid this escalation that we continue to see in the marketplace. So approval of this will set our foot on the path of utilizing our fire safety sales tax to repay debt so that we can advance the construction of three different fire station projects that are currently in the design phase. What you're voting on tonight isn't to officially approve that debt issuance, it's to authorize staff to begin the process of preparing bond documents, all of the reviews that need to happen. If you think about when you go to buy a house, all of the documents that have to be signed, your your loan papers, et cetera, that is what you're doing. You're allowing us to start working on those papers. In speaking with our bond counsel and our financial advisor, we anticipate approximately late April or early May is when we would be coming to you with the final bonding documents at that time, which then you'd be giving the authority for us to issue that debt. So again, we think this is the most financially responsible way to get these public safety projects done, go ahead and accelerate addressing those needs so we don't fall further and further behind and our dollars aren't able to go as far to meet the needs of our our public safety men and women.
Great. Is there any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I definitely agree this is the best way to to leverage our funding that we do have, but also get the needs and and the stations where they need to be for men and women as as they're serving our community. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Yes.
Item passes. That brings us to our public hearing portion. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at twenty-one thirty-one South Scott Avenue from R. Twelve Two Family Residential to C. Two General Commercial. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on November nineteenth of last year, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is to rezone a vacant lot at Scott and Twenty-third Street that is currently an R. Twelve Two Family Residential zoning property, zone property to a C. Two General Commercial. The purpose being is that the business, the Venue Smart Cleaning Service, which is on the lot just to the south of there, wants to combine this lot so they can do a building expansion for their business. This would be just for the rezoning, the first phase. They would eventually, if this were to be approved, they would need to do a minor subdivision. They would also still need to do building plans and engineering plans for a building expansion that met all city building codes, engineering design standards, and non-residential development standards. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you, Mr. Aurora. Madam City Clerk, will you read the second reading?
Twenty-four dash one two seven, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R. Twelve Two Family Residential to District C. Two General Commercial for the property at twenty-one thirty-one South Scott Avenue, second reading.
Any questions or comments regarding this? Hearing and seeing none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Brings us to item number two.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem? It's my it's my understanding that the applicant has been asked that we postpone both the public hearing and and ordinance twenty-four, one twenty-eight indefinitely. And so I make that motion.
A second.
It's been motioned and seconded. So I do not have any objections. Is there any objections? Anyone have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll on the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Yes.
Motion has been upheld. Madam City Clerk, number three, please.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at one seven two zero zero East Medical Center Parkway, one seven two zero three and one seven two two one East Twenty-third Street from R. Thirty slash P. U. D. High Density Residential slash Planned Unit Development to C. Two General Commercial. New information only.
Thank you again. This was a staff-initiated rezoning that was considered by Planning Commission, also on November nineteenth of last year, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is to rezone the three properties that currently make up the Independence Utilities Center and the Dispatch Communication Center. Prior to the city acquiring this property back in twenty fourteen, it was zoned R. Four P. U. D. for the purpose of a proposed multifamily development that never occurred. In two thousand nine, when the city did adopt the U. D. O. standards, it was converted to an R. Thirty P. U. D. While the city can't operate in any zoning district, staff does believe it's in the best interest to rezone this property to C. Two to better align with its current use and provide better, more clear design guidance for any future city uses or city buildings that are proposed on this site. And with that, I have no new information to provide.
Thank you, Mr. Aurora. Madam City Clerk, will you read the second ordinance?
Twenty-four dash one two nine, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R. Thirty slash P. U. D. High Density Residential Planned Unit Development to District C. Two General Commercial for the properties at one seven two zero zero East Medical Center Parkway, one seven two zero three and one seven two two one East Twenty-third Street, second reading.
Is there any questions or comments? Hearing is seen none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Ordinance passes. That brings us to number four.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilman Fears?
It's my understanding that bond council has asked that we postpone this for two weeks to deal with some language in the that that they're working on. And so I make that motion.
Second.
So that would be till to January twenty-first, to be specific.
Right, that would be the Tuesday, the twenty-first. It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions?
Sorry. Can I interrupt? I'm sorry. I'm bond counsel for this. My name is Megan Miller. If we if we could actually have you open the public hearing instead of postpone it and then continue it after you open it, that would be preferred in this instance. I'm so sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Mr. City Manager, any any problems with opening up the public hearing and and leaving it open?
No, no disagreement from me, sir.
Thank you.
So since Madam City Clerk and Mr. Cover since we did not vote on that, can we, do we have to rescind the motion?
Yeah, if we could just take back, take back that motion to, that would be preferable.
Okay, I'll I'll rescind that motion then.
We have a second for the rescinding?
Second.
Have it moved and seconded, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, we will open up the public or the full public hearing. Will you please read number four?
A public hearing for the formation of the Blue Ridge Crossing East Community Improvement District, full public hearing.
Mr. Cover, we would just let this stay open and would not close it?
Yeah, so at this time, we we would, since we've opened the public hearing, we would see if anyone wanted to speak on this at this time. And then either once they had or if no one is wanting to, then we would go ahead and continue the public hearing to that date certain, which will prevent us from having to renotice everything up again.
Okay, is there anybody online that is wanting to speak on this issue? I'm not seeing anyone. Madam City Clerk, is there anybody in the the waiting room, virtual waiting room?
I've not seen any, however, I do have a question. This is also listed for a first reading, so would we postpone the first reading to the twenty-first?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Yep.
Well, seeing nobody here to speak, we'll leave this open, then we will move on to?
At this time, I think we would, if if Councilmember Fears could now make his motion to to continue the public hearing to January twenty-first, now that we've opened it up, and that will officially leave it open until the twenty-first. Megan, do you agree with that?
Yep, that's exactly what we need to happen. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move to continue this public hearing to January twenty-first.
Second.
Motion is seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll for keeping the public hearing open until the twenty-second?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Yes, hearing is held over to January twenty twenty-second, I said twenty-first, my apologies.
That leads us up to second reading readings, Madam City Clerk?
Twenty-four dash one two five, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the U. S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Office of Justice Programs, fiscal year twenty twenty-four Burn Discretionary Grant Program through a sub-recipient award from the Mid-America Regional Council, which allocates four hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars to the City of Independence, Missouri, to expand the use of automated license plate readers, appropriating the the necessary funds and authorizing future change orders and appropriations for the same project, second reading.
Are any questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, may I inquire of the city manager?
Please.
Mr. City Manager, this gives the City of Independence about seventy-two more license readers, is that right?
That is correct. Thanks to the funds that were secured by Congress and Cleaver, through through no local appropriation, we're able to install about seventy-two of these in our community. One point I I may make, i- if you don't mind, I I think I would just add that this technology is utilized on an as-needed, if-needed basis. So Police Department isn't filming and recording every vehicle and monitoring who's, you know, moving whereabouts town. This is utilized by our Police Department as part of crime-solving efforts. So if that necessitates them to to utilize that technology, they will. But just want to provide folks assurances, particularly since we're talking about a recording device. This is not, you know, monitoring just general population moving throughout the community.
Thank you.
Good point, Mr. City Manager. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilman Stewart?
Hey, Mr. City Manager, how long is the data on those kept? Do you know?
Let me defer to Chief Dustman to help with that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. City Manager and Councilman Stewart. We keep all the data for one year, which is commensurate with the local surrounding jurisdictions. And after a year, it is purged and overwritten, just like any sort of recording device that you would have at your personal residence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Perkins?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number two, please.
Twenty-four dash one two six, second reading, an ordinance approving a final plat from McBea Acres in Independence, Missouri, second reading.
Is there any questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilwoman Wiley?
May I inquire of the city manager?
Please.
Mr. City Manager, can you talk about how this is going to benefit the Fort Osage School District? School District?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Property is not all created equal. It is assessed at different price points based on how that property is being utilized. In the Fort Osage School District, if you were to visit with their superintendent or certain, you know, members of the Board of Education, one of their challenges and frustrations is that a great amount of the property within the Fort Osage School District is zoned for and assessed at the agricultural level, which is the lowest of all of the uses and the assessments in property taxation. By developing this property for the use that it is intended, you are now going to greatly increase the taxable valuation of that property, which is going to bring additional revenues to the district to help them with their operations within the Fort Osage School District.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Ordinance passes. Brings us to twenty-four-one-three-zero. Madam City Clerk, please.
Twenty-four dash one-three-zero, second reading, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Local Public Health Agency Accreditation Assistance Grant Program for one additional year for the period of December one, twenty twenty-three through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and or time extensions for the same project and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Hearing is seen none. Madam City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Ordinance passes. Brings us to the first readings.
Twenty-five dash zero-zero-one, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the U.S. Twenty-four Highway Phase Three Project from Wilson Road to Sterling Avenue as part of the U.S. Twenty-four Highway Phase Three Project, project number one-one-two-two-one-two slash federal project number J K U zero-two-two-six, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three, first reading.
Do we do we need to postpone the first reading on this? Is that what I understood, Mr. Cover, to say?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we postpone twenty-five-zero-zero-two to first reading to be on January twenty-first.
Second.
There's been a motion. Is there a second to postpone?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to postpone until January twenty-first. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll on the postponement, please? If there's no questions or comments. Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Perkins?
Yes. Motion for proposed postponement until January twenty-first carries. Madam City Clerk, twenty-five-zero-zero-three, please.
Twenty-five dash zero-zero-three, first reading, an ordinance repealing ordinance number one-nine-five-two-one regarding surplus property, first reading. Twenty-five dash zero-zero-four, first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Article eleven Landlord-Tenant Code and Article fifteen Rental Ready of the City Code, first reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That brings us to Councilman Comments. We'll start with Councilman Stewart.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman Stewart. Councilman Fears?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just a couple of things. First of all, I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I just wanted to again thank the staff that have worked so hard during this storm. I was up on the square early this morning, and boy, I thought it looked, given the 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 point in time that we were in the storm, I thought it looked pretty good. I know it wasn't, it's not where we want it to be at that point in time, but I mean, it's not completely done at that point, but it looked pretty good, and I really appreciate all the work that the staff have done on on all levels. And lastly, we did have to the two listening sessions on the rental ready. I'm going to postpone any comments on that until next, the next meeting when we actually vote on that. But those sessions went well, and we appreciate the feedback we got on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Fears. Councilwoman Vaught?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have a couple of things. First, I too want to thank all the dedicated individuals who have worked tirelessly during our recent snow apocalypse to keep our city safe and operational. I also appreciate the city staff who worked behind the scenes to ensure tonight's meeting could be virtual. So I'm grateful for all that you do, and thank you for everything. And Mr. City Manager, could you please give us an update on what's going on with the Sonic at Thirty-Fifth and Nolan?
Boy, would I love to. I know that project has been a nuisance to all of us since the, frankly, the tragedy that unfolded there last summer. You know, the city has taken a very patient approach with the property owner who owns that. There was quite a period of time where that owner was working with their insurance company to figure out all of the details around either renovating that facility or declaring it a loss and demolishing it. Ultimately, toward the end of the year, the property owner did decide that they wanted to move forward with renovation of the building. They approached the city as is customary about getting permits to do the work relating to the renovation. City staff reviewed their plans. Also, as is customary, had some comments to make sure that their plans were in compliance with city code. There was quite a bit of time where that property owner then was was processing or reviewing that feedback, I might say, from the city. We huddled as city staff and really felt like, you know, because we have taken such a patient approach, now we really need to start to accelerate that timeline a little bit. So the city's chief building official has issued some milestones, activities that need to be completed and dates by which they need to be completed in order for the permits to remain valid for that property. And if any of those milestones are missed, if any of those deadlines aren't hit, then the city is going to put that project out to bid for demolition. The timeline on that would be no more than a maximum of six months. But we are going to hold fast to the deadlines that we have set and those milestones we've set. Again, just really feel like that has been been patient on our end as a city. But that that is a nuisance in terms of the blight it brings to a main corridor in our community. It's not becoming of the impression we want to give visitors coming down one of the main prominent thoroughfares of Independence. There's a safety issue associated with that, even though there's temporary fencing around it. Certainly worry about somebody entering that unsafe facility. So we will, we will be working closely but aggressively with the property owner to ensure those milestones are hit. Otherwise, we will initiate our dangerous building demolition proceedings.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First, I want to say thank you to the staff that was outside all weekend dealing with the storm. I actually was given the chance to do a ride-along with Municipal Services this weekend. I rode with Kyle Kane in in a plow, and it was very eye-opening. It it was these big trucks that you just assume never have issues. It was slick out, and they were struggling. But I had a great time, and Kyle was a real expert, and that job takes a lot of skill and a lot of patience. I was very pleased that there were not very many cars on the road, and that really helped them out this weekend. And then I was also proud to witness the investiture ceremony for Melissa Johnson, who is our new Jackson County Prosecutor. And I'm really looking forward to working with her, and I know the council is and staff is. So that was a really, really amazing, amazing ceremony that took place in Independence, and our police color guard presented the colors. And then I wanted to ask a couple of things to the city manager. I've I've had a lot of questions and discussions with constituents about the GeoBond. It's it's happening. It's it's real now, and I was able to talk to a lot of people over break. And one of the things that has come up several times is, are we being good stewards with the street tax money? And so I wanted to ask you, Mr. City Manager, if that is something that we had citizens vote on and then changed, shifted or changed how we were going to spend the money. Can you talk about that a little bit? And also, I believe we 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 put that to another vote in twenty-eighteen. Is that correct?
It was in two thousand seventeen when the citizens were asked to consider renewal and then making that tax perpetual, which was approved in August of two thousand seventeen.
Okay. And I think the concern is that that they were that people were promised overlays and that that isn't happening. Can you talk about that, please?
Yeah. Well, let me start with kind of the the utilization of those funds. So as you all know, the city council has appointed citizens to serve on the Street Improvement Oversight Committee. That is a body that meets. They are tasked with reviewing financial reports, getting project updates on how those dollars are being collected. Per the ballot language that was established, there is a separate street improvement sales tax fund. You can look at either our monthly financial report. You could look at the city's annual budget, or you could go online to the city's website this evening and look at our Open Gov portal, where you can see real-time spending for each of the city's funds. Every dollar that is collected from that half-cent sales tax is deposited as revenue into that street improvement sales tax fund, and is expended from that fund as well. Primarily, those dollars go for the annual maintenance of city streets. I will say, the ballot language for that street sales tax that was approved by the voters was listed as being for transportation purposes, which was said to include but not be limited to the construction, the maintenance, and repair of city streets, sidewalks, curbs, bridges, culverts, and traffic signals. There was nothing in that that required the exclusive use of overlay in there. So while overlay is a part of what we do, we have found some innovative approaches, primarily the Cape Ceiling program that we have discussed with all of you, where a road is maybe beginning to show signs of deterioration but wouldn't yet qualify or meet our standards for a full overlay. By moving to that approach, we're now in a place where instead of touching every street in the city once every twenty-five years, it's more like twelve or thirteen years that we're able to hit every street. So we've cut that time in in half. So we are operating fully within the boundaries of the ballot language that was approved by the voters. We continue to honor the oversight responsibilities that were approved by the voters with that Oversight Committee. That group continues to provide semi-annual reports to the council that are available to the public to read. Those funds don't shift around. They're allocated to that specific and unique fund, in this case, the street sales tax fund. And and like I said, there are many different ways that you can go and independently verify that on your own on the city's website.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. So I'm excited to have more conversations about the GeoBond, excited to get started, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protem. Everybody's giving kudos to the first responders and the streets teams and the nine-one-one squad. So I will move on and give my special appreciation to the nonprofits who served all kinds of folks, some with meals, but especially CSL, who got many of our houseless individuals into motels so that they were not outside in this frigid weather. Hats off to the police who transported some folks and made sure that they got into safe conditions. I know this is a really complicated issue. These are not long-term solutions, but we also can't forget the short-term solutions. So well done. My second question is to the city manager, whether we can make a request of the Audit Committee to do a consideration of the rental-ready inspection program and whether they would consider that in their future work plans. So, Mr. City Manager, I leave that to you for next steps.
So there is, in the city's code of ordinances, there's a little bit of a process for for how the management analyst gets his work. And just to make that simple, that's assigned by the city's Audit and Finance Committee, which is, of course, chaired by Councilmember Fears. If memory serves correctly, that body's next meeting is later this month. So I may just ask that that gets added to the agenda for possible consideration by Audit and Finance Committee for consideration of assigning that to the management analyst.
Thank you very much. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCandless. And Councilwoman McCandless, I'm also on the Audit and Finance Committee. If you could get, give us your thoughts and your ideas to Councilman Fears, and he can distribute them to Councilwoman Wiley and myself, that kind of helps give you, so what what you're thinking and what your your outcome is wanting to be and how we can roll that out to our Audit Finance team.
Fantastic.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I want to say thank you to you and your team who had worked through this whole snow event. I would appreciate, I want to say appreciation for your your work and your continual updates that we receive several times a day regarding the different categories of our departments and where they were at and what they were doing. So we were able to give that real-time information to our constituencies. They were inquiring and asking questions. So kudos to you and your team, and a big kudos to the men and women who are out there in this blizzard, fighting those conditions and still acting very professional and doing the work that they needed to do. Big kudos, as Councilwoman McCandless was saying, this was a full course press with our community partners, for the whole city to work together, neighbors helping neighbors, and also community partners helping those who are less fortunate. So I think we've done extremely well for having, I believe this is the third-largest event that we've had in a hundred years. So I think we've done pretty amazingly well. IPL, I would say that our tree trimming procedures are working as is to try to keep this electricity on and our houses warm and everything's moving as it should be. That's all I have. Mr. City Manager, do you have any other updates or information?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll make a quick, but just a couple of things that I would like to bring to the council's attention. At the bottom of your agenda this evening in information-only, information-only item number two was notice of a purchase order that was issued to Wydenman Construction for three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. That is pertaining to the construction of Heidelberger Bridge. For those that aren't familiar or don't recall, Heidelberger Bridge is located in northeast Independence in Councilmember Stewart's district. That is a bridge that's been out now for several years. It is a very small bridge by traditional standards, but it has caused major headaches for the residents that live in that area. for the residents that live in that area, significant reroute of traffic because of that bridge being out, when the council made the final ARPA American Rescue Plan allocation of funds prior to the end of calendar year twenty twenty-four, Heidelberger Bridge was one of those projects that was funded, so to ensure that we met the federal deadline of having those funds encumbered, we did issue that emergency purchase order to get that project moving, so hopefully that will bring much-needed relief to the residents in that part of town, and one less bridge that's closed in our community. This past August, the voters considered five different potential amendments to the city charter, and of course, one of those passed, even though it was only one question, did have some important outcomes, our city law department has been working these past several months to get the document updated in accordance with the voter-approved changes, they have now submitted that for a final review to my office, and once that is done, publication of the new document will occur, so only the changes that were approved in question one will be reflected in there, but we will have the new chart ready to go and published for the community, I believe here in short order, and just one last item from me, want to give a heads-up to everybody that the study session that will be occurring next Monday night, one of the items that I would draw your attention to is an update on the Independence Power and Light Strategic Plan and Governance Model, so last year, one of our major projects was an independent review of Independence Power and Light, recommendations were made about how to enhance the long-term operation and function of Independence Power and Light, recommendations were also made about the governance model to ensure the best outcomes for the ratepayers of this community, a lot of times, activities at the city are kind of like a whale, there's a lot going on below the surface that you don't see, but we are coming up for air on this project to give an update to you and to the community about our progress, making some recommendations about that governance model that we hope will spur some important conversations in twenty twenty-five, so if that is of interest to you, we hope you'll tune into that study session next week, and then just to conclude my remarks, Chief Dustman had asked if he could share a quick update with the council, so I will defer to him, and then after he's done, Mister Mayor Pro Tem, nothing further from me.
Thank you, Chief Dustman?
Thank you, Mister Mayor Pro Tem and Mister City Manager, I just wanted to give a final encapsulation on the emergency operations preparation, as well as the planning that went involved, I will tell you, from the council's standpoint, in my seventeen years of government experience, I have never seen the collaboration and coordination that was put in place by not only our city manager Zach Walker, but also assistant city managers Lisa Reynolds and Charlie DeSalle, along with our emergency operations chief Sam Morris, I will tell you that we have had constant communications over the last four days, up to every single day, getting everyone together, and largely, that is because we have been able to prepare for this storm and respond to it in a very wonderful fashion as far as operations go, as it relates, I will tell you that we have had no major or significant incidents, and that is largely in part to the preparation that went into place, I want to give a shout-out to Deputy Chief Sumstad, who coordinated our operations, as well as Zayn McKinney, who, from our road crews, he did a phenomenal job responding to trouble spots, as well as just overall coordination for our roadways, and so I know you all have recognized and responded to multiple constituents that have had concerns, but I will tell you that I have never seen anything like this as far as a whole-of-city approach, and so I'm very appreciative to our city manager and his office for the leadership that he exhibited over the last week, and very much looking forward to twenty twenty-five as our city continues to thrive and launch from here, that's all I have.
Well, thank you, chief, this was a great meeting for the first one for twenty twenty-five, good things moving forward, so I will drop the virtual gavel and adjourn this meeting, thank you, everyone.